Welcome to the February 23 joint meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council and the Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Commission. I'm going to call the council portion to order.
And I'll call the commission portion.
All right, we're excited, we're going to get to talk about our new park on the west side of town. Ms. Lyons, we will turn it over to you.
Mayor, City Council, Parks and Recreation, we're excited to show you some drawings today. As you know, we've had a joint meeting, you know, been here last year. Just a few weeks ago, we had a very well attended community meeting at Blackman High School. I saw some of you there where we had an opportunity to engage our community. Parks and Rec has also done some survey work. We have to take all that feedback and really begin to start drawing a little bit, but we're very early in the process. And really, the goal today is to show you really two options over here, which are kind of more what I would call a regional approach that looks citywide. Another example at the other end of the spectrum, which is what I would call a West Park that's got a very wide mix of uses. What you'll see are really color drawings, markers and lines on the paper. What we want to do is get your reaction to these options to see which option do you think is the direction we ought to march? We haven't done any significant engineering, any significant design. We thought it was going to be most appropriate to touch base with City Council and the Parks and Rec Commission to say, out of this range of options, which is the direction you want us to start working on? You know, sometimes the answer is in the middle. So, some of these options were developed as late as three o'clock today. So, we're really trying to show you a wide range so we can see which direction we need to go. Ms. Jackson may want to do a little bit of an intro of Kimley Horn and some of the work that's happened since the neighborhood meeting, and then we'll turn it over to our consultants.
Matt, if you recall, some time ago when we began this process, we did a request for proposals and selected Kimley Horn and Associates. And we've been very pleased to work with them. They bring a lot of professionalism and creativity to the table, and I think you're going to enjoy hearing from them as well. Ray and Josh are here tonight, and we'll hear what they have to say. If you can turn it over to Ray.
Thank you very much. Pleasure to be here tonight, Mayor, City Council, Parks Commission. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to, as was posted, to start to share some initial ideas and concepts for what this very important park can be. These are just initial ideas. It's early on enough to test the size of the site, the program on the site. So, we really want to create an interesting dialogue tonight if we can and hear from you what you like, what you don't like, and what we need to go back to the drawing board to come up with hopefully ultimately what is the ultimate plan. I don't know if there's our title page. How did we got here, so to speak? Some of the public meetings were mentioned after the site selection in last August. Couple of the meetings where we got a lot of great feedback. The initial charrette that we had as part of our team was a couple of weeks ago in our Nashville office over the two-day period, seventh and eighth, in which we as an internal team came to bear on this and brought some ideas together. But we also invited city staff out and engaged them in the charrette process as well to get just some initial rough feedback and points of departure for where we're going. Tonight, very important, this meeting tonight in which we are sort of unveiling some of these initial ideas and getting some initial feedback from you. The site itself, obviously you know about it, you purchased it, it's your site. It's an incredible site strategically located, great location, west of 24, north of 840 there, about 120 acres, very easy access, very accessible. Usually, we deal with park projects and we have access challenges, if you will. No such problem with this piece of, this parcel. Zooming in, taking a little bit closer look at it, obviously, it's fairly wide open. Again, as I pointed out, about 120 acres. It has some natural geologic formations and stuff that we'll get into a little bit, but as was pointed out, we haven't done a lot of major engineering on the site yet. We're really just starting to get our feet wet with that. One of the things that came out in the design charrette though with one of our team members, Bill Huddleston, is that this was part of the Blackman family and their land holdings. Of course, the cemetery is still there onsite. And we thought that was an interesting facet that we might want to keep in the back of our mind and weave in maybe some of the history of that into the final form and fashion in terms of what the West Park really wants to be. We mentioned the public meetings, and these are the top rated results and wish lists, if you will. And I'm a partner at Kimley Horn, and I'm in our Atlanta office, and we oftentimes go out to the public, and if we get 200, 300 responses, we feel pretty good about ourselves. Alicia and David were telling me we got over 800 responses to make up some of this, as well as at some of the other public meetings, up to 1,000 people had feedback. And that is really a testament to the amount of citizen involvement and participation in this process. So, these are the results. You can see them there on the screen, the top rated, if you will, program elements. Trails is always number one, it seems like. Again, walking, walkability, get to an open space, everybody can use trails. Number two on the list, interactive water feature. Number three is a playground. Four is the pavilion. Five, dog park, event space, multipurpose court, and a skate park. And through the design process, what we realized is we were able to really achieve six out of the top seven of these program desires into the design of West Park, in which we'll show you some forms and fashions in terms of that. And I believe the skate park is actually going to be handled in a different facility, Angela was pointing out to us. So, during the charrette, how we started that thing, which was really kicking it off, the major principles from Murfreesboro's 2035 Plan, a lot of those filters that we wanted to use for the design and the ultimate look and feel of West Park. We had programming elements there on the side. These were just up on our whiteboards, and we were just sort of writing these as we were going through challenges to the site. There's actually, some of us actually working there, show that we actually do work on these. Facility operations and staffing, you know, once you inherit and or create this park, you have to maintain it, you have to staff it. So, that, there's a lot of concerns and challenges with that as well. And then again, the programming that we took away from that, from that initial charrette, which was more sort of eccentric towards softball and baseball fields, but one I think in which we're open for suggestions. This is a very unique snapshot of the site. This shows some natural features. Quite often times, when clients buy a parcel of land, they think they have 120 acres to use. Well, on this particular map, I think what we're trying to highlight here is that it is part of a very unique geologic formation. And if you will, I'd like to ask Sam to come up. Sam came to our charrette and gave us, it was really a 30-minute spiel, but I told him he doesn't have 30 minutes tonight. He's going to give you the Cliff Notes version of exactly how this land fits in and this parcel does, because it's very important and germane to the final design and the master plan. Sam?
Thank you, Ray. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the Parks and Rec Commission. Sam Huddleston, City Engineering Department. What you have on the screen is an aerial photograph we made May 4, 2010, and overlaid on that, topographic contours. Significance of May 4, 2010 was two days after the rain event that we call the May 2010 floods, the Nashville flood. This area, Shores Road, Veterans Parkway, 840, was really impacted in our community and by the modern technology of aerial photography, we were able to catch this area two days after that. The rain event stopped Sunday night about 9:30, 10 o'clock. We were able to fly, have a contractor fly Tuesday morning and capture this imagery. And so, what you do see is very significant closed depression or sinkhole flooding. This wasn't a surprise to us when we made an offer on the land. City manager and staff, we were aware of that, and so we took that in consideration. But what we do see is the very importance concept here of water management and the fact that this particular area is very flood prone. And so, what I discussed with the team, the design team, was the importance of managing our own water, the importance of not making matters worse on other folks. And what is interesting to me about this is that the three or four areas on our property, park property that are holding water in this image are actually six feet lower than the floodwaters that are around it. And so, I think water was still rising for several days following that. It's also five to six feet lower than the outlet for this property. So, that had a bearing on the concept plan and what we thought we could do with the property, and I think the design team's taken that to heart and has come up with some appropriate stormwater management approaches. And also, in our investigation of this site, we will look into the geology and the water picture a lot more so that we can give the design team a much, much better idea of how to shape and form this property to respect the natural features that are there. And I'd certainly be glad to answer any questions, or I'll step aside and let Ray continue with that conversation.
Mr. Huddleston, when we look at this, we're seeing a pretty significant amount of what appears to be water on the surface there.
Yes, sir.
Of course, the question is, is how deep is that water when we're looking at it? I mean, are we looking at water that's six inches deep or six feet deep or, you know, because we can obviously mitigate this with retention ponds and detention ponds that have more depth and reduce the magnitude of how much property it covers. But how much, what percentage of this do you think could be rearranged and turned into detention pond as opposed to what we're seeing on this picture?
So, the first question was how deep is this water, and the contours are suggesting that this could be four to six feet deep. We looked at the drainage patterns. It doesn't appear that a significant amount of water ran onto this property. So, this is all water that fell directly on the property and wasn't easily absorbed. The rule of thumb I think we use for stormwater management areas for development is somewhere in the 12% range, and I'm going to look around at Ray for 12 to 15%. And so, what we're going to try to do is keep our stormwater management in that 12 to 15% range, which will be a pretty natural number anyway.
Thank you, Sam. As you can see, so when presented with that information, it was a challenge, but one that we feel that we can grab hold of and run with and work with. And as Sam pointed out, we're not trying to change thousands of years of geologic time and formations here. We're trying to get an understanding of it and work with it and utilize it, as well as the potential to make it something that really the community can also embrace. When we started the design charrette, we started to look at just sort of big picture ideas. This is the team there working, and a lot of different facets, and I think this was right after Sam and Bill had the engineering and the site geologic discussion. And so, one of the first things we started to do was embrace that area, those natural formations, and use them as sort of a demarcation, if you will, that maybe this park, West Park at 120 acres, is large enough to have sort of two faces to it. A regional face that really faces the 840 and the highway and Veterans Parkway as you exit off of there, and then another face to the top of, to the north of the site there, on the north side of those formations, that really addresses community needs. And that was kind of our first thought process here, was that maybe it is a tale of two parks kind of woven together into this. And so, you see the use of some pinwheels there for some ballfields and parking pods. All of this at a very high level, large scale, just trying to get our feel for the site, test fit some of the program elements that we'd already sort of discussed. Do those program elements, will they fit on the site? And if so, where is it that they really want to go? Where are their adjacencies? Where does it make sense for them? And so, this whole notion, again, through this brainstorming of big ideas, was that it came up with a regional side and a neighborhood side. Another thing that we started, we did a quick exploration of was the adjacent property next to Veterans Parkway there, 40-some acres. At the time, I guess when we met a couple of weeks ago, it was possibly on the market or there was a potential for it, and we just said, explore. If we were to pick that parcel, that adjacent parcel up, what sorts of things could we anticipate, and how would it affect the layout of the park? And certainly, other than granting us more acreage, there is some commercial potential there that then could really sort of play into the notion of the park and the regional side of the park there. It also allows us to possibly do a rerouting of Vaughn Road, which is currently very close to the exit off of 840. You can see that Vaughn is sort of rerouted in there through some what would be highway commercial and park supporting properties. The second part of this was, again, what Sam was starting to talk about, was rather than wet ponds and the whole notion of what those natural formations could be, maybe on the right there, what you start to see is an example of more of an environmental or an interpretive type of a formation where we embrace those natural features, put trails around them, put boardwalks there, allow folks to really engage into that, create some planting areas and shelves there, and sort of facilitate the fact that they're going to collect water and they are going to do their job in terms of nature, in terms of embracing those low areas on the site, much like you see there at Medical Center Parkway at St. Thomas Hospital. Bill Huddleston showed us that example of, again, that linear bio swale type of approach there on the bottom. We see that as a very complimentary use to the park planet in and of itself, and something that would make it very unique, embracing the natural features of the area that's given there. This is some photographs of, again, on day two when we engaged the city staff, reviewed ideas with them at that point in time, and really culled down into the three concepts that we're going to show you tonight. As was stated, the first two concepts are very centric toward softball and baseball facilities. This is option 1A that we're showing you here. And again, what you'll start to see there, again, is this notion of the regional aspects of this park really lay themselves out along the southern boundary, along Vaughn Road there, with a lot of championship and softball type fields there, and a lot of parking that could accommodate, again, a large regional draw and a regional type tournament. The event space there is in the center, over the top of, if you remember, those other two sort of wet areas, if you will. You know, maybe we can put an event space and cap that and put that over the top of that, no structures at that point. And then, the third one there, it's called retention area in this, but then that one is the one that we enhance. Maybe we put our efforts into that, keeping that one. That one's in the lowest area on the site, and we embrace that and turn that into our sort of our environmental outdoor classroom, if you will, and allow the citizens to be able to understand and grasp exactly what it is from a natural portion that we're dealing with there. You can also see there at the corner of like Burt Knob Road and Blackman Road, I mean, that's more of the community oriented park right there. There's multipurpose courts, there's the pavilion, the playground, the splash pad. All of that stuff occurs there, and so that even if you were having a regional tournament or something going on, it still gives you easy access from Burt Knob Road to get in there and be able to utilize that and not really have to mix and mingle too much with the traffic from the, from that regional tournament type of a program there. The smaller fields to the north there could also be just for community use or expansion space. The large parking lots that would sort of help facilitate the large draw to the fields to the south, they provide extra parking in the event space during the times when we might have sort of community gatherings there or holiday festivals, July 4th fireworks, et cetera. Option 1B, and I'm sorry, I'm remiss, just because we were keeping score, this actually, this is total of 17 fields. And this next concept, 1B, is a total of 13 fields. We backed off of the desire there, but still grouped a lot of the fields all to the south there, if you will, and really let that whole northern arc become that sort of community neighborhood park that really responds to all the new residents that are living out in this area of town. And so, again, that separation of easy access in off the interstate to get into the regional components on the south, but then still certainly accommodating residents and neighbors accessing it off of Burt Knob Road to the north. You can see there, the event space even could start to share, we obviously could use that and grade it in such a manner that it could be used for soccer fields or practice fields. Really, a multipurpose type of a field is really what we envisioned there. And certainly here as well, we really see the retention area, again, is something that just will require a little bit of enhancement there and turn it into a community asset. So, option two, which is hot off the presses, if you will, I think the ink is still drying on that as we speak, is sort of a departure to the other end of the spectrum. If we're not so centric on the ballfields themselves, we have the groupings there on the south, but this was really more, what would we do if this were all, almost all 120 acres or almost two-thirds of it were really thought of as a neighborhood and a community type of a park with all of those facilities really being expanded up across the northern tier there? You see the event space really in a multipurpose playfield really got relocated up into the northwest corner there with a large parking bay, arc of parking there to be able to provide for community events, but in the case of there were some sort of regional activity down here on the fields that are provided, certainly would provide overflow parking there. But you notice how that all those sort of community features, those six out of the top seven things are really splayed out along that northern edge there, and really present themselves in a very accessible and easy and flowing manner, all the way over to the side there, onto the right-hand side with the multipurpose athletic fields. Again, that could either be wide open fields, that could be a variety of picnic areas, pavilions, or it could be striped off for soccer fields in the event that we'd like to do that. The multipurpose sport courts are there, the children's playground, the pavilion, the interactive water feature. All of those things are along that sort of, again, that northern top arc, if you will. So, this is a quick image that we did at the charrette, just sort of showing what the, one of the concepts early on, what this could start to look like and start to feel like. Again, incredible visibility from Highway 840 here. You've got an incredible piece of property, a great program, and the challenge ahead of you to create a truly remarkable park. We're just glad to be part of this and joining it with you and your staff to kind of help walk through this vision. We'd really like to be able to get some good comments and some good direction tonight and have a good dialogue. We're hoping to get the final master plan completed at the end of April, because we know you want construction documents to get started and finished as quickly as possible. And so, to do that, we'd really like to get some feedback tonight as to probably what are, you know, next option, maybe next two options, depending upon feedback tonight, come back and get some of those finalized, and that way, we can get started in May hopefully with our construction document phase.
I want to get some feedback from you, but I mentioned to you that we had the wide range of options. So, if I can zoom out to 30,000 feet, explain what those range of options might look like. So, what you saw in option 1A and 1B was a real focus on softball. This would go back to looking at a park system where there would be a focus on softball here that would allow McKnight and Starplex to focus on baseball, and we've got the Siegel Soccer Complex and the Jordan Practice Facility that focuses on soccer. That puts large numbers of fields for soccer, baseball, softball, and individual parks. With a large number of fields, the advantage there is you can have more Murfreesboro kids playing in those programs. It gives you the ability to recruit larger tournaments, and there is some advantage into those specialties. Now, the disadvantage, that means you're going to have to drive across town depending on which sports you play. So, that's one range over here. What option two shows you over here is a West Park that's got a mix of uses. Little bit of soccer, some baseball, some softball, some event space. Both include the neighborhood concepts, but it really comes down to, are we wanting to mix our uses in West Park, or do we want to look to specialize our sports facilities? Both have their advantages and disadvantages, and that's really why we wanted to show you that wide range, so we can see, you know, from a policy standpoint, which direction did you want to go?
Can you, because this is the first time, I think, of course, all of us are seeing this, but could we scroll back? We've got 1A on here, which is predominantly ballfields and then event space, multi-use courts, and interactive water feature, but could we go to 1B? Okay, thank you. Just want everyone to be able to see these again.
So, Mr. Lyons, you mentioned that this would focus primarily on, 1A and 1B primarily on softball. So, I'm looking at their different sizes, and every one of these has a championship baseball field. So, I thought all the big ones were baseball and all the low ones were softball, but obviously adult softball would play on the big ones. So, is that, we say a championship baseball field, maybe not really a baseball field, but another softball? I mean, I'm trying to understand that discussion a little bit.
Sure. You know, that was one of the questions I had for...
I can help you.
I think...
These two drawings, they're looking at focusing on softball, of course, but knowing that the community needs a variety of things. If we were to build the baseball field and make that a turf grass field, they have a product now where it's a mound that we could flip over to make a flat surface. So, we'd have a stadium field not to just play baseball games, but also play soccer, lacrosse, other events in a stadium type setting. Also, here, if any of you ever close to baseball teams, high school teams in the area, anytime it rains, Belmont University, who's the closest turf field, they're booked up $250 per two-hour session. And high school teams can't get a field because it's booked up throughout all of Middle Tennessee. So, it would serve that purpose to provide for that need, but we'd also be able to use that as a multi-use sport spot, so we could play soccer games, lacrosse, and maintain that stadium field.
But I guess the thing to understand, the 220 fields would be softball and little league youth sports?
Right. The way it's drawn out, the 1A would probably have the most flexibility in terms of what we need for our community. We have a need for citizens for recreational softball. There's field space there to include that. They technically need six fields with the potential to have eight for future growth. That 1A meets all those qualifications while still providing four fields for adult play, and it keeps them completely out of the youth complexes. So, we're playing adults with adults. And then, the stadium complex that you see there would be able to focus more on the player development side, the competitive side, travel teams who can't find a field to practice on, kids who want to get better, but there's no facilities available. By putting some turf fields in there, you're able to eliminate rain, be able to still hold championship games for tournaments. But if you look at that, all 17 of those fields with the use of portable fencing would be, could be utilized for a girl's softball tournament, or with the use of portable mounds, we could host a little league baseball tournament. And then, we've still got four fields for adult softball tournaments.
Thomas, can you flip that back to 1A? We're on 1B up here. You were talking about 1A, right?
Right, 1A. Right, 17.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yes. And so, the four top fields there, if you look at this concept, look at Spring Fling, currently, we're using six fields to host the high school girls' state championships. And it's still tight, the schedule's congested. We're playing championship games side by side. So, with a facility like this, we'd be able to thin that out so that we could have one day dedicated to championships and play them in our championship facility. But the tournament potentials for a versatile facility like this would have, I feel like if we commit to build it, I can have it booked fairly quickly.
I think my question went back to, and I think Mayor McFarland somewhat answered it, the 325, the bigger fields are for...
Adult softball.
Teenage, but also teenage and older baseball? I mean, is that what's played on? I'm trying to see who plays on which fields.
Right. The four field complex there, you could play high school. They're skinned fields though, so they wouldn't have grass on the infield. So, you could play recreational, but ideally, the adults need somewhere to play. Right now, we have, this spring, we have field number four at Starplex, the field at Old Fort Park, and field number eight at Barfield. That's where our adults play, right alongside the kids. By adding four fields for them to play with themselves, we could increase our league from 60 teams to 80 teams just playing Monday through Friday. If you throw the weekends in, we could increase it to 140 teams. If you throw the weekends in, we could increase it to 140 teams.
So when you said, I'm sorry, I'm soccer. If you want to talk of soccer, I can name you all the dimensions, but when it comes to baseball and sticks, trying to change the fields, so a skinned field is all dirt infield?
Exactly, all dirt infield. For higher levels of baseball, you need a grassed infield. So we wouldn't play the higher level of baseball with the exception of the high school field where we could host high school games and we could fill a void there for a lot of our older travel teams as well where they don't have space to play. And then also, the 220 fields, that's girl softball. The 220 is the optimal distance for both college and high school softball. So we'd be able to set ourselves up to host any high school, college-level tournament.
And you can make those smaller with that portable fencing, is that what...
Right. The 220 fields would probably never go smaller than that. Now, we could take those adult softball fields with portable fencing, which is what we do at Starplex now, and however, if we have that up front, we can put in a little bit more permanent-type portable fencing. So the sleeves are metal permanent, the fencing would be moved much easier than, and like I said, with the high school baseball field, we label that as a baseball field because we'd want to throw that out. But the two, technology now, we're able to go in and paint lines on turf grass fields, erase them the next day, wash them off, and go put different lines on it the following day. So we would be putting a reversible mound so that we could flip the mound over to a flat playing surface, we could play soccer, we could play lacrosse, we could play just about anything. And note too in this design that the multi-space area that's there, we could light that, that would open up the door to put some of our soccer teams, to at least be able to practice on that side of town, the Blackman area. It also opened it up for some of the up-and-coming leagues like the Ultimate Frisbee, the Cricket League. I envision there in that area, we put our cricket pitch down like we have at McKnight, that can double as a solid foundation for a stage or a staging area for special events like Fourth of July and things like that. So during the week, they could play cricket, come in on the weekend, we have a special event, we have a good, solid pad to put equipment and stuff on.
Could you talk about option two a little bit, Thomas? Because what I heard him say was that that option had six of the elements that the community wanted.
Right.
Is that correct?
I guess the decision that the council would have to make in terms of option one or option two is what exactly we want to do. This is very friendly to citizens and the people in the area, and it meets every need that was thrown out there. I think even taking the skate, other than taking the skate park out, it meets every request that we got from every citizen. However, it's not going to necessarily meet our tournament needs. Right now, with this drawing here, we would still be putting up portable fences to host Spring Fling, to host the girl's softball tournaments because we've got to have a minimum of six, ideally, seven fields would host that tournament without the portable fences. Our adults will get a place to play, however, we'd have nowhere for this ongoing need for travel ball practices and for people that aren't playing recreational sport. You know, in other sports, we have a venue for them, tennis, we have the academy-type program, we have lessons in soccer, we have select soccer. But however, baseball, if you're a travel team, you're on your own, regardless of whether you're a citizen or not, you're on your own for finding where you want to, where you're going to practice and play. This concept wouldn't meet that need and it wouldn't drive the tournament revenue, however, it does do a more overall fulfillment of needs in the community itself.
Could we hear a little more about that from you, please, as far as the six again? I'd like to, if you don't mind reviewing that and then talking about that.
Sure. If I could jump in there, I could ask you to shift over to the slide with the bars that address that. I think what we're looking at, and I gave you a full copy of our Survey Monkey results, including the comments to read at your leisure because there were many comments with that. If you look at the bar chart, okay?
We have it.
You have it, so I just have to remember it. If I could ask our city to, thank you, that helps me so much. Thank you. Looking at that bar chart and looking at those recommendations, and I think, Dr. Gilbert, what you're asking is outside of our athletic needs, what does the community ask for in this space?
Well, I think even within, my priority, I guess, is what does the community feel like that they need?
Sure, absolutely. So looking at that most requested piece is trails, and on each design, it's harder to see because I think the first thing that you see are the ball fields, but if you look for the red dotted line, and we'll go back to them as well, you'll see a trail system worked around the park in all three designs. You'll see that there's walking options and obviously we'll highlight that more, but if you can walk over and see that cemetery, if you can walk, you can do laps for exercise, you can utilize that space in the walking trails, and we'll maximize that portion as much as possible. The second most requested feature is the interactive water feature, and every survey that we've done for the past 10 or 15 years, splash pad is what a lot of people call them, is right there at the top. We want to do a really good splash pad, a really nice interactive water feature. So at this site, the fountains that you play in, basically, those interactive visual artistic pieces, all three designs that are proposed before you do include that. I think the third design separates it more, there'd be a little bit more space to do a bigger one, but if that's something, and I think it is something that our community has asked for a lot, it highlights that. The third most requested feature is a playground. All three elements do include playgrounds, multiple playgrounds that we would obviously dive into more as we go through this process. Pavilions, all three designs have pavilions. The third design has the most options for that. Event space, I think that multipurpose grass, open green space where we can do concerts, where we can do special events, where we can also play soccer and play lacrosse and utilize that multipurpose space is incorporated in all three designs, but you'll see more of it and you'll see more flexibility for that type feature in that third option. Multipurpose courts, that basketball, tennis, hard-surface court option is included in all three designs. So out of, it's six out of the seven most common. Dog parks and skate park were the two that are not included in these designs. I think both of those are features that we recognize as important in our park system and look for your direction on that. I think we would be comfortable from a staff level in looking to focus on some other sites that would be more suitable for those two uses while still acknowledging that they're important. Jumping back to that concept of our entire park system, even in the west, when we look, this is one of our west park options. This is our first real hit. I think one of our discussions that we have had throughout this process is that we can't fit everything that we want into this one space. We're going to have to look at other sites existing in future to really meet every need. So I think just to answer that question and refer back to that bar chart for other park elements, and then the flexibility as we dive in deeper, as we go from these preliminary concepts to a master plan to bring to this group again, that has a more defined absolute to seek your approval with. I think that's what we're here for tonight, is to get your feedback on what you feel like is important. What features do you want to focus? With that regional concept that we've been talking about, I don't want you to look at it as an either/or. It's to serve this community in Murfreesboro, the regional concept does give us flexibility. It allows us to bring in regional tournaments, to bring in that economic impact, to really hit a broader community, but it gives us the flexibility also. We can have the flexibility through the management, through the scheduling, of serving the community and finding the balance at your direction and what that looks like from a, and an economic impact from a how we host tournaments, the level of tournaments that we serve and host, balanced with how we serve our residents.
Thank you, that was very helpful.
Thank you.
So to summarize all of that, out of those bars there, which ones are included in two that are not included? It sounded like all three of a lot of those were included on all of them, or all these...
All features are included on all. The third option, the one with less ball fields, has more, has more event space, more multipurpose space, more community, neighborhood park concept.
But they all have it.
And yes, the third option has less ball, more other. Options one and two have more ball and less other.
To me, just looking at them, you know, to give back to what Angela, what you're talking about, I mean, we're not, we can't get everything we want in this space, so we've got to get the biggest bang for our buck. And when I look at it, at first glance, just looking at it tonight, I think 1B is kind of the best of both worlds. You know, I don't think we have the luxury of reducing the fields down to the number that 2 provides because we all know the minute we build this, it won't be enough fields. And I think one of the things we've done a very good job of in the development of our facilities is the tournaments that we attract, whether it's Spring Fling or the other outside tournaments, and that has a material, as we all know, a material economic impact that goes a long way in subsidizing the financial component of the parks that we build. So, you know, I think just looking at them, 1B gets us that kind of middle ground of the best of everything.
Hey, Thomas, on 1B, while we're looking at that, go over with us real quick, please, on, so my concern about 1B, as I will look through it, was that we only have, you know, kind of one field's worth of multi-use area. I mean, so that's soccer, football, lacrosse.
All credit to one.
I mean, every field game, we've only got one field coming out there. I mean, I'd kind of written in my notes just that, you know, my preference going into this thing would be 10 or more, baseball, softball, three to four multipurpose, and then plus all the other amenities.
Well, the 1A, the multipurpose option, gives us a lot more versatility because we could put eight small-sided soccer fields on there or put two regulation fields, you know, based on the size of that, but...
In 1B, where would we be able to use the, what we're calling baseball and softball fields right now? Out of these 13 fields that are ball fields, where would, which of those would we be able to use also for lacrosse, football, soccer?
Only the...
Any of them?
Well, we could use the bigger ones for youth soccer, football.
Just the outfield?
Right, the outfield space. Now, the turf field, of course, our intention would be to build a turf space that we could play all sports on, to give that all weather.
Is that not included in 1B?
It is, it is. There's one turf field there.
That championship.
The championship baseball field, that's, if it says championship, it's turf. Right, that's what we hope.
All right. I was going to say, one thing I think that's important on any of these plans, you continually talk to people about, when I speak to groups, about how Murfreesboro has gotten to where it's almost like four separate cities within a city. You know, you've got, you know, now with kids trying to drive from the north side of town to Barfield, it's 50 minutes. I mean, I can drive to Nashville quicker than I can drive to Barfield. So I think it's important that whatever we do with this, these fields, that when we start looking at McKnight, you know, I don't think you want to specialize and say, okay, look, all softball's going to be here. I mean, soccer, that's just the way it is because that's, if you want to play soccer, you've got the Jordan Farm now and you've got Siegel, but, you know, I think one of the things I keep hearing from residents is we want these type of amenities on our side of town that we don't have to drive to the north side of town. And then that gets into transportation, that, you know, keeping people where they live and having work and play and live in those areas, that keeps the traffic issues that we're dealing with. So I think whichever we do, trying to localize those, and that's what we're working on, the neighborhood parks with partnering with our schools, but maybe take that into account as we're working on the planning of those facilities, not to get it to where we're specializing so much that people from the west side of town have to drive to, you know, the north side of town or vice versa.
I think that by doing that with baseball, we're setting the tone for baseball, softball, that we can offer that on all three, and then utilizing this part, we can meet some of that need on some of the other areas, and then in our future park, look at other areas in the west portion of town too to focus more on the lacrosse and the soccer and those type of sports. In terms of usage for tournaments, the more fields, the better, of course. Siegel Park generates about $7 to $8 million a year. We only host about eight to 10 tournaments a year. So you're looking at an $8 million economic impact that roughly translates to $200,000 of direct revenue and sales tax dollars to the city. If we built a facility that we could utilize every weekend for tournament purposes and then use during the week for our general citizens, we could possibly double that number looking at the number of tournaments that we host at a facility like this. You know, our number one priority is to take care of our citizens, but it is really nice that our citizens get to go out to Siegel and play on those quality of fields on a Saturday morning for rec, and it's the same field that they host state tournament on.
Thomas, you're doing a great job making an argument for option one, concept A, which I happen to agree with you. That's how I would vote. But I do want to point out and agree with the mayor, specialization and having that drive across town, it's horrible. And I hope we don't go...
I know I'd do it twice a day.
And then, my third point, I've been sitting up here for years, and the skate park, those people are growing each and every year, and that's an idea whose time has come and we need to address it here in the near future. And that's my comment on the skate park, thank you.
I'd like to chime in on the specialization. I'm not as worried as much with this specific piece of land because from any part in Murfreesboro, I can't think of a parcel of land in the entire city that's easier to get to for everybody. If you're on the south side, you just take veterans. If you're on the north side, you can jump, if you're far enough north, you can jump on 840, and we've got the Cherry Lane interchange coming in that, from my side, on the farthest east away, take Rutherford, jump on the interstate, and then to 840, that this parcel of land is the easiest to reach with the least amount of traffic because any other park, it's in the middle of congestion. So specializing, especially when you can specialize along 840 to showcase, I'm not as much against, and I like 1A as well, it just looks really good.
If I could ask, because we're early enough in this process, you don't have, we gave you three concepts, but you don't have three choices. If you would like to just tell us what you like about each, where you want to see our focus, we'll ultimately give you a hybrid. We don't have three different things to do, we have 1,000 different things to do. Tell us, tell us the components. What kind of feedback do you have?
Quick question. I know, Mr. Lyons, we've got three acres on the other side of the interstate that came with this piece of property, and then the homeowner at the Blackman Community Meeting came up to me where we have this notch on 1A that we have the multi-use fields. I think we have someone who potentially wants the three acres across the interstate, and then if we could get that other little house that's there, what would that do as far as entrance? Would that change some of the design?
Talking off Blackman Road?
Yes, right on Blackman Road.
I mean, it certainly, everything leads to impact, you know, the ultimate layout and circulation. I don't know that it changes things radically by the addition of that.
I just keep, you know, I noticed that little notch that's right there where the multi-use...
That's right.
Courts. Have we made any progress on that, Mr. Lyons?
Not yet.
Okay.
But if we, you notice where that community park is, it's right at the intersection that originally was the heart of Blackman. We could add an entrance there. When we would have big tournaments, whatever, that community park is not isolated from the rest of the facility. You know, citizens would always have access to the community park with the splash pad, the playground, the basketball courts, tennis courts, those type things. One thing too, if we're wanting to meet a need and still maintain the need for softball facilities and baseball facilities, one suggestion would be in that multi-event space is to make that synthetic turf. We can play about six times as many players and teams on synthetic turf with... uh, with very few limitations in terms of weather, things like that. So, if you, if we really want to provide that multi-sport facility, that would be the way to go, would go with synthetic turf for those two fields. That would meet the need on that side of town, uh, and it'd also help out in terms of bringing in revenues, uh, for other areas.
Would we have to call Shane to see if it was too wet to play out there if they were turf? Hey, actually, I do want to say this. Part of my notes was on three to four multipurpose, when I said, you know, that's kind of my preference, three to four multipurpose, I have underneath there two of them turf. I mean, I, I see the same thing you're talking about every day. I mean, we, uh, just, my experience with what, what we see in the soccer world is that, um, more and more and more and more are going to turf. And, you know, my son went to Portugal last summer and played, he played seven games and never played on a blade of grass. You know, it's just the same issue, you know, so...
Right.
It's, I, I think they would be full, and we might be able to turn those into a revenue producer.
And ideally, someone lives on that side of town. If you could get out of having to drive back and forth from town in the afternoon, you could take your child to practice close. I don't think the issue's that much going Saturday morning across town to play your games. The big issue about driving across town is at 4:30, 4 o'clock in the afternoon, it does take 50 minutes. And from my house, in the afternoons, to go from McKnight Park to my house, which is off of 99, it's a good 30, 40 minutes. But if I catch it late at night or a certain time of the day, it's 15 minutes, so...
Thanks, Thomas.
Yeah, I, I'll tell you one other question I got, and then I'm not gonna ask you more. Um, one of these layouts, sorry, one of these layouts, is there a way that we can do this to where it, you know, if we buy another piece of property five years from now, six, eight years from now, that, that one way to lay this out is a little bit more flexible, that if we say, alright, we're gonna do something that's, that's a little more broad-reaching now, but if we buy a piece of property and want to do, you know, for, for lack of better examples, if we want to add a bunch of baseball, softball fields where these multipurpose fields are now, six years from now, after we get a new piece of property, is there a way that we can ensure that flexibility from that standpoint is there?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a really good question, and, and something we all need to be taking into account as we, as we refine this and move it forward. That was what that one little exercise that I showed you did, just off the table, to see what the expansion to the west would, would involve. But, but I think all of these would, would need to make sure that we take that into account, that, that the flow of the circulation, the parking, and the potential for the fields will fit into that space, um, in terms of a future expansion. I think that's very prudent and, and a great suggestion. And I was just sort of looking, scrolling through these, just to see, none of these would preclude that expansion. If you sort of look at them, that, either that western edge, the, the little piece up near the corner there, all of those would welcome those, sort of the broken tooth syndrome into the park, uh, property per se. Um, and I think all three of these, and again, I'm sure our hybrid, our fourth and fifth, or whatever we come up with, uh, those can accommodate that as well.
Mr. Willance, I think I'd add, um, there's an example of that happening now, out at Starplex McKnight. When you really look at what the Miracle Field brings, how we're, if you, if you backed up that concept and look at how that park is changing now, and what this would do, um, I think what you're asking is what the next step would be to this space. Uh, you know, really looking at how that change i- is transforming now.
Yeah, if we buy another 100 acres, which we've talked about, you know, some 100 to 150 acres for parkland in this area, I just would want to make sure, just for example, when I look at the event space there on 1A, you know, the, you know, we'd want to be able to, uh, design it in a way that that could conceivably be another couple of softball fields, perhaps, efficiently.
If that used them were to go somewhere else.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And then also some of those needs that, um, you know, as you look through the survey, and, and just what you've heard from the community, that, that we're not addressing now, um, as a part of this. A Westcom, for example, a, um, addressing some of those, those other concept, um, the agricultural interpretation concept, um, a lot more outdoor, open green space, uh, the, the proximity to every citizen, having park space, having those greenways and multi-use trails to connect to them. Um, just dialing back and looking at our park system as a whole, uh, you know, we're at a, a very pivotal moment in that, um, in planning this, and make sure, making sure we're making good choices for this. Uh, but this isn't going to be our only choice.
If, if I could, I'd like to touch on four or five different topics here, very briefly. I'll, I'll try to be brief. The, the skate park concept, I, I, I think we need to try and put our parks where the demand is. And, and when I look for skateboarders, I look in the downtown area, and being it's a so specialized thing, I think the downtown area is where we need to look for our skate park. If it were me, I wouldn't look very far. I'd look out here at the Civic Plaza, because if we could have kids playing out there every day versus a place where we use for two or three events a year with a few tents, and we're afraid we're gonna break up the bricks, if we could put a skate park out there, I think that would be phenomenal. So, I think that would be a location that we should look at for a skate park that would be centralized in the city and convenient to everyone. Um, as far as, one of the complaints I hear, uh, at our, uh, ball fields that we have out at Sportscom, um, seems like, uh, when, when I go to the softball tournaments and stuff out there, there's always complaints about the irrigation system and lack of water. Uh, I, I would like to know if some of this water problem that we have could be used to our advantages. There's the potential of detaining that water and using it for irrigation during dry times, uh, as well as retaining the water during the, the wet season. Um, the specialized parks, I, I can tell you of everybody that I've spoke with in the Blackman area and, and the Berkshire neighborhood and, and that area out there. When I talk to people, they say they want a park, but I've yet to have anybody tell me I want specialized parks. I, I want it to be, I want a massive soccer complex, or I want a massive baseball complex, or I, I just haven't had anybody tell me that. And, and we're building this park for the, the north part of town. It, it's, I, I, I don't know if, if we're trying to get too far off into the weeds when we start looking at trying to incorporate it into a citywide, uh, project, as far as, when, when it gets specialized and you send all the traffic from the hotels out there for a weekend event, yes, that's good for the economy, but we're not building this for the economy. It's great that we can help the economy with it if it does, but we're building it for the west side of town. And, and I think that's what we need to focus on, is make sure we're providing what they're asking for. And so, I think I've got less emphasis on ball fields than I do green space and walking space, and just space that kids can get out and run, and throw a frisbee, and, and, and have their dog on a leash and run through the field with, and, and that type of, of usage as much as I am the structured part of the park. And my last concern, and I hope somebody will address this, is the cost of turf fields versus artificial turf fields, or natural grass versus artificial turf. Because we, we've just built a couple fields, and one of them was a synthetic field out there. And we're a little over $3.2 million maybe on the Miracle Field and, and that project going out there. We can't put eight fields out here if they're $3.2 million a field, or, or for, for two fields. So, I mean, I think that brings the reality back into the budget of, it's, it's fine to say we want turf fields, but what are those turf fields gonna cost us, or artificial turf fields going to cost us versus natural grass? So, those are, those are my questions.
Can we go back to 1B, and what is in the northeast corner? You have the retention area, and then everything... It was sort of a space holder, placeholder for additional, um, open areas, uh, multipurpose, meadows, parklet, park areas. There could be some more, you see a scattering of picnic shelters and pavilions, trails. Uh, again, an attempt to soften and buffer that, uh, out parcel there a little bit, but keeping it a little bit more naturalistic on that corner.
I, I think looking for that difference and that balance between an active and a passive space. When you look at the neighborhood, if what you want to do is go over to the park and, and just be, have a, you know, throw a frisbee, um, have a walk, really looking to separate, um, some space from that active, um, sports complex.
And just going back to Mr. Smotherman's, uh, question, uh, we will take a look at, you know, some of the costs, uh, dealing with the artificial turf versus the, the grass, and irrigation of the, the entire park's gonna be important, so we'll make sure. I've got notes of your questions, and we'll sit down with folks from Kimberly-Horn.
Yeah, I thought your explanation of the bar graphs, uh, you know, helped me sort out, you know, these choices pretty well, because there is a wide variety of things that were asked for in all three designs, so...
There, there are, and any feedback you have on those, um, i- is appreciated. You know, and if there's something that you didn't see there, that, um, that you want to make sure that, that we know about, um, now's a good time. I think what we heard when we met the first time with this group in our joint meeting, when we really kicked this off, um, was a focus on the timeline. I, I hope we can leave this meeting, um, so that when we come back to you again, um, a third time, we're really zoned in where we need to be, so we can keep to that timeline expectation and, uh, get started building a park.
And as Ms., Ms. Jackson mentioned, you know, we're not limited to three choices here. You know, these were the, you know, 1A and 1B over here, and option 2 over here, um, but we're not limited there. If there are other, uh, things we need to take a look at, we're certainly ready to take that direction.
So, how about we do this, let's, um...
Could you put option 2 back up again? We're having a conversation about it.
Is it possible that we could have copies of this? I mean, this is the first time that we've seen this, and I have thoughts about it, but I'd like to chew on this a little bit before I make my comments. Uh, and it's, you know, it might be a little bit more prudent for us to, to see these in front of us, and, and not little bitty copies, but give us pretty good size.
We, we can send you digital also if you would like, so you can, uh, you can do this number right here, too. You bet.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
It shows that you've done a lot of work and tried to respond to the, the public's input in this. Uh, and, and I think with some, uh, a little bit more direction, I think we can come up with something real helpful. Uh, some experience that's, some have had with baseball might be helpful to help you, uh, in, in tweaking some of these ideas. I know, uh, in, in one sense, having lots of options is good, but I know, uh, in experience of about 40 years, that when we have a lot of options, we kind of limit some of the things. Some, baseball really likes grass infields. And, 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 uh, and there's a, as you said, Thomas, when you move to higher levels, that you're gonna require to get some of those tournaments. We've had issues with that, uh, getting those tournaments and not having grass infields. So, that, you know, may need some more deliberation on, on that idea. But I, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. This is a, shows a lot of work, and, and, uh, I think we're gonna get there, but we still need to chew on this a little bit more, and I'd like to see copies of it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I agree that, agree with that. I think you have done, I know you've done a tremendous job, and I need to, like you said, look at it more closely. And I, what I'm hearing, I think it may actually boil down to, are we gonna do sports, build a sports facility, or are we gonna build something that the public say they want? And I'm not going one against the other, but I think it's gonna kind of boil down to that, have a little sports in what the public want, rather than, I guess, rather than have majority of sports, is what I'm seeing on the screen here.
You, you bet. I, I think there's a balance. I think that, um, the athletic community, their needs are not currently being met in terms of ball fields. I think, I think there is absolutely the request and the need. Um, I, I think the, the 17-field option, I, I think we could build 30 fields, and Thomas would book them immediately. It's, it's, um, it, it's a matter of, of your, your choice and your direction, and your selection, and your priority to us, in, in terms of, of where we hit, where we hit that balance, how far we take it.
And we really, even the time that I've, the 20-plus years of being here, we've actually taken away fields as opposed to adding fields.
You'd be saying...
I played, I played softball out at Samsonite, and then that went away. And then, then, then we, yeah, we transitioned to Oakland's, and that's where we had played softball, and then that went away. And then we transitioned to Old Fort Park, and then part of that went away. And, and so really, in, in, since we built Barfield, we've not added...
We've lost four fields. Last baseball, softball field's been built, we're in 1999. Since we built our last baseball fields, we've actually lost three fields. Uh, so, you know, we've built a lot of soccer, uh, recently, um, and...
And the, the mix, too, we have to look at, that, I, I, I agree, there's a mix between the community and also some sports fields. Because if we don't bring something that will bring in revenue as we book these tournaments, that makes it harder to build more parks when we don't have the opportunity to bring in the revenue that we need to help pay for some of it. Because I assume this is not gonna be an inexpensive proposition on building this park. We've got $5 million in the land, and do we have a preliminary, just a ballpark spitball cost on what we're thinking?
Spitball, 22 to 25 million.
So...
Jesus. That's a big spit.
Revenue sounds good.
So, so, again, back to those expectations, um, you know, as we build facilities, how we manage them and how we structure them, and I think, Mr. Willance, from how we, um, how we structure our tennis concept, when we look at those expectations and, and how we, um, how we define what revenue neutral might look like, how we're serving, and where, where that focus goes. Um, you know, there's some key decisions that, um, that need to be made in this structure. When you look at maintaining and operating, uh, this park, it's, it's not gonna run itself. We're going to need to make sure that, that we are considering, um, after we build it, we're gonna take care of it. We, we have to have our, our maintenance, and, and, and we didn't highlight it in the plan, but it has a, a maintenance facility, um, tucked in the corner of each design for a, a crew that would be dedicated to, um, to this park. And it's, it's certainly something to consider from an operational standpoint, from a direction we're going as a city. Um, Mayor, I think you mentioned at the public meeting, at the town hall meeting that we had out at Blackman, um, Murfreesboro doubling in size every 20 years or so, right? So, when we look at not just what we're gonna do to serve our community today and the needs that we're not meeting, what are we building towards, um, and where our focus is? I, I think we want to be very focused on our mission and our purpose and our direction, um, our core values, as we look to, um, you know, we talk about youth sports, and I know we all get very passionate and very competitive, but when you look at the wellness component, what youth sports does, not just for physical health, but for mental health, and, and how our community is growing, um, when you look at how it serves adults playing sports, and what, what gets us outside and off screens, um, you know, part of, part of our intention and purpose and, and value, um, our land conservation, our park space, what we're really trying to accomplish here, and making sure that we have green space that we are getting in front of in this community as it grows and as it develops, as it becomes more urban. Kids don't have backyards and farms to play on, they're coming to the park, and, and how we're gonna serve our community and the value we place there.
Ange, let's do this, um, because I think Bill makes a good point. Uh, we have a Parks and Rec Commission meeting next week. Um, I know there'll be another council meeting pretty soon, um, shortly thereafter. Uh, so why don't you guys get this emailed out to these two groups? That'll give us time to study it between now and next Wednesday. Um, we can kind of take a straw poll, make that part of our, uh, agenda packet for next week. Um, and we'll take a, kind of a straw poll, um, for, after, after we've had time to absorb that, and we can pass those results on to you guys for your next meeting, um, so you, you kind of know where we were leaning. And, uh, and then we'll stay on schedule, and, you know, because I know we want to, directionally, you know, know directionally where we want to head pretty quickly, so we can, we can keep this thing moving.
I, I think that's a terrific idea. If, if I could ask you, um, even in, in that straw poll, um, keep in mind, you don't have three choices. You have more. Tell us any specifics you can get, where we can give you a more ideal hybrid. Uh, we, we'd love to do that now.
Okay.
And I guess, uh, just to point out, on page 2 of this booklet here, uh, with the graphs on the front of it, um, the, the people who are using these parks, Smyrna, Nolansville, Rutherford County, Rockvale, Smyrna, uh, Wilson County, Christiana, uh, just outside of Rutherford, uh, just outside Murfreesboro, Blackman Community, right outside city limits, between Smyrna and Murfreesboro, non-city resident, Blackman, Florence, you know, Smyrna resident, Smyrna resident... resident, Blackman Community, Burn knob, Smyrna. I mean, when we look at this list of who's wanting to use this park, these are people who aren't going to pay for this park. And that's the biggest concern I've got for it, is, you know, 38%, is that right? 35% of the people that submitted their responses are not Murfreesboro residents. And Murfreesboro is currently spending about, what, $11 million a year on parks? And Rutherford County's spending, I think, $300,000 a year on parks? Again, I will go to, if you're talking about revenue, we need to talk to the county and our county commissioners and say, hey, guys, step it up. I mean, if you're going to charge an extra amount of money for hotel motel tax, and you want to have a tourism effect on Rutherford County, don't spend it on outline fire stations, spend it on our parks. And, because, I mean, they're demanding parks, and the city of Murfreesboro's supplying them free of charge. I don't blame them for taking advantage of it, but it doesn't make sense for us to do it.
And that's one of the thought processes when we went through the initial development, is how we can operate the park without being city subsidized. Of course, the capital is on the city, but I think utilizing some of these options, we can provide the community what they need and what they're asking for, but we're also able to subsidize the cost of park operation, very similar to what we did at the Adams Tennis Complex. While that initial building was funded through the city, we, it's not necessarily subsidized through the city to continue its operation. And that's what we'd like to be able to do as a park, department, and athletic division, would be able to operate, maintain the parks to that world-class standard without having to be subsidized by city tax dollars.
That's a valid point. That's another whole meeting.
If I could point out one more thing, Mr. Lyons included in front of you, a few pages from the Murfreesboro 2035, I think, as it relates to some of our specific facility needs, looking at that broader document and the efforts that have went into that, and it addresses, Mr. Smotherman, I think, some of what you're talking about. And also just in terms of, again, back to our goals and broad intentions in building this park and in the park system, a lot of valid points.
But all those people who come and use that facility for tournament play and stuff don't just benefit the city of Murfreesboro. Those tax dollars get split with the county of Rutherford, and we're all Rutherford County residents. But my concern is, is at some point, we have to say, if they want to use our park facilities that much, we need to figure out some way that they can help pay for our park facilities, whether it's through a different rate scale or a different fee if they participate in our city programs, or somewhere in there, we have to come up with a plan that says, if you're going to use these facilities, and, you know, you're not a tourist if you come from Smyrna and use our facilities, you're just coming down the road and using our facilities. Somewhere in there, you have to help pay for these facilities, because we can't put the entire burden of these parks on the citizens of Murfreesboro if, you know, when we look at the numbers, what was it, 30% of the people have visited a Murfreesboro park in the last year, and it.
I would guess, I don't have the numbers, but I would guess that at least on the adult softball leagues, it's probably half and half, city residents and out-of-city residents.
It is. Keep in mind, though, adult softball's run through us, so they're paying, that's a money-in, money-out program. So we operate adult softball with a zero balance.
We're going to have to have, I know, I'm sure council members, 15 years ago, were having the same conversations, but that may be an overriding conversation, especially since we've got, you know, if you just say with land, 27 million estimated maybe here, and then you've got another 140 acres that are, at some point, there's going to be an operational cost that you've got to figure that's going to hit your bottom line on a yearly basis, on more people to hire to maintain it, more electric, more, so there's an operational cost that needs to be discussed as well, so.
Thank you for recognizing that.
Yeah, we'll make sure and remind that to Mr. Lyons at Budget. Okay, is that cool with everyone, that we'll get the information, and then what we can do is email individual comments to, for us, to Mr. Lyons, and then that can be disseminated to staff? And then what we can do, hopefully, our next meeting, is, I mean, we don't have time, I think everyone realizes this, and I hope that this is a 2018 project and not a 2019 project. I'm going to reiterate that every time that we talk about this park.
Yes, sir.
That, but we don't have time to wait. So is that good with everyone?
Absolutely. We'll have comments to you guys after our meeting next week.
Okay. Thank y'all for what you do.
Ray, thank you. Excellent work.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you to my partners who helped me with the presentation.
Thomas, thank you for jumping up there.
Angela, thank you.
Do you want to call adjourned?
We stand adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening.
We stand adjourned. Thanks.